Next one is ordinance establishing the courthouse building envelope project fund and establishing a project-based budget for the courthouse building envelope project. Committee recommended approval of this three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, we have the motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
Well, this is one of those that, and some, the others that I said no on, have more parts than I think belong in a separate fund that isn't going to come back to us on contracts, and this is a big one. The last time there was a major remodel renovation of the courthouse, it has cost us a fortune, and that's why we're ending up with this. So I think the public and the council especially deserves to have way more contact with contracts before they go out.
All right, I didn't hear a motion in there, it was just a comment.
Well, a vote no, my motion. I guess you don't say a motion for that.
All right, so any other discussion on the ordinance? Ready for the roll call?
Ken Mann?
Yeah.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
That passes six to one with council member Brenner opposed.
Next item is an ordinance establishing the 2015 Building Improvements. The committee recommended approval.
Seeing none, I think we're ready for roll call.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes. I mean, no.
Red Brown?
Sorry.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes. That passes six to one with council member Brenner opposed.
Next item is an ordinance establishing the 2015 Silver Lake Park Improvement Fund and establishing a project-based budget for Silver Lake Park Improvements. Committee recommended approval of this three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, motion in front of us, any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Well, I'm going to support this because it's, the whole project is small enough and it's, it's a safety issue, but why is this all coming from real estate excise instead of park fund? We have a park fund now, why aren't we using it on parks? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Well, the real estate, as I've said before, the real estate excise tax is also used for stormwater facilities and other things that are, that we are, we have to do. This is something that needs to be done because it's a safety issue, but we don't have a parks fund for stormwater facilities. We do have a parks fund for parks, so I don't understand why we can't use it.
Right. It looks like we're going to get an answer, and there's certainly a variety of funds we can choose from.
That's the best way of explaining it is, is we felt REIT, REIT II is the appropriate fund to do this. You know, the parks fund, of course, has got that, the money in at the, anyway. This is a decision that we've made and it's been, has been, gone through the committee, and we stand by the decision that the REIT II is the appropriate fund to pay for this.
Okay, Ms. Brenner?
Well, I don't think telling me this is the decision we've made answers my question. The REIT II fund is a finite fund, and we've got to do the stormwater facilities. It's not like, maybe if we have time, we'll do them, and the more that keeps coming out of it is for parks issues when we have a parks fund is not going to be, it's taking money away from stormwater facilities. We're never going to have enough money for that.
Yep, we understand your argument, and the administration brought this forward to us out of REIT. If you want to change it to a different fund, you can make that amendment.
Okay.
Ms. Brenner?
I move that we change the last sentence to be funded by the park improvement, is it called park fund or park improvement fund? Park improve, the park fund, whatever. There's only one park.
You know what the fund's name actually is?
Park Special Revenue.
Park Special Rev, nobody seems to know.
Park Special Revenue Fund. I think everybody knows what your intent is.
Park Fund, yes.
Either of the funds will work, there's no revenue that comes into this Park Special Revenue Fund, there is revenue that comes into REIT II. It's, it's either one is, would be a reasonable option. We picked REIT II. That's traditionally where we've funded park improvement for a lot of years, out of that particular fund, and so it would be a council decision of whether you wanted to change that or not.
Mr. Cremmon?
Thank you. In fact, council member Brown actually preceded me, and I'll defer to him.
Mr. Brown?
One other thing that I'd like to say is, is the Parks Revenue Fund with the million-plus dollars that's in there, we have somewhat slated to use that money for the operations of the REIT conveyed property over the next few years, whereas the REIT II fund, if you move it to there, that's going to diminish that fund balance down. We don't have that option out of the REIT II to be able to pull that much in terms of operations out of it, so that's another reason that the decision has been made.
So can I, could you just, do you have the definition of what we can spend REIT II money on handy?
This is Dewey Desler from the executive's office. Yeah, you can use it for roads and parks and stormwater, which we do, all three of them.
So, okay, it seems to me to be a clear, clear, clearly allowed option, I support it.
Mr. Cremmon?
You know, the explanations we just heard from the executive's office makes it unnecessary for me to pose a question that I had planned on asking.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
Well, I never said it wasn't legal. I'm see, it's legal, I'm just saying that we're going to have an awful lot of stormwater facilities that we have to improve. REIT is a fund to do it, we can't take that out of the park fund. However, we can take park improvements out of the park fund, and if you need to transfer money from the general fund or somewhere else into the park fund, well, that's something the county council majority has done in the past. At least people have a clear understanding. If our park improvement fund is only for the reconvenance, it should be called the reconvenance fund, not a park improvement fund.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to switch the funding for this fund from the REIT II to the park improvement fund. Any further discussion? Mr. Cremmon?
I just would like to, maybe either Brad or Director McFarland can answer this. What is the balance, what's the fund balance for the parks fund?
Mike McFarland, welcome Parks and Recreation. On the Park Special Revenue Fund, there's about 1.4 million in there. We have not expended down on there for the reconvenance yet. The intent was to take and budget that over and project that out over a period of years to offset the operating costs, the equipment costs, the various expenses that go along with that particular fund.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that fails six to one with council member Brenner in favor. Now we have the ordinance in front of us, any other discussion? Guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes, that passes unanimously.
Next one is the ordinance establishing the 2015 Lighthouse Marine Park Improvement Fund and establishing a project-based budget for Lighthouse Marine Park Improvements. Committee recommended approval three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, we have the motion in front of us, any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
This also is a safety issue, and I am going to support it, but it sure would be nice to have at least this come from the park improvement fund. Otherwise, we're not being straight with the public about what the park improvement fund is for, if it's only for one place. So that's my motion, is to fund, funded by the park improvement fund or whatever it's called.
Okay, so the same motion as the last ordinance, switching this from REIT II to the park improvement fund. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that fails six to one with council member Brenner in favor. Now we have the whole ordinance in front of us, any further discussion? Roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Next ordinance is establishing the South Fork Park Improvement Fund and establishing a project-based budget for South Fork Park Improvements, and the committee recommended this three to zero for approval, and I would so move.
All right, we have the motion in front of us, Ms. Brenner?
Well, this is to create new stuff. It's not about safety, it's not about repairing anything, it's to create new stuff. If this shouldn't come out of a park improvement fund, I don't know what should. My motion is that the funds for this come out of the park improvement fund.
All right, so the same motion as previously, that this whole fund be funded by the park improvement fund instead of REIT II. All right, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Mann?
I just want to say that, that improving a park is totally, is different than a capital investment, like actually building and creating a park. And I, I get a little uncomfortable when you make these statements that we're not being transparent or it's being misleading, because, you know, we, people actually do watch this, and I, I don't think that's accurate. You know, I think these are, these are reasonable capital expenditures that the REIT II fund is appropriate for, and I, if you don't like it, that, that's one thing that I just would ask you to choose your words a little more carefully when you make statements like that.
Ms. Brenner?
Okay, I'll try, try to choose my words very carefully.
Thank you.
Building new stuff onto land that's called park land is improvements to the land, it's an improvement. Therefore, it's extremely eligible and seems like a great fix for the park improvement fund to cover it. On the other hand, as I said, the REIT II fund, there's uses that we have to do that we don't, in other words, if we did nothing at this place, there's nothing by law that says we have to, but the stormwater facilities, we have to do them. It's not like we have a choice.
I understand, and thank you for your
Better?
New language, way better, I'm much happier.
Okay.
I'm serious.
Thank you. Another question for probably Director McFarland, or maybe Mr. Desler, anybody with finance. What, what revenue are we generating on an annual basis approximately for REIT II?
It's about 1.4 million dollars a year.
A year? And how about the, the special revenue fund, the Park Special Revenue Fund? It's stagnant?
There is a little bit, but.
Mike McFarland, there would, there would be some interest income on that, and then we have some tower revenues that are going in, but those are going to, those we're keeping in there because we're going to need those to fix the, repair the roads over time.
Yeah, well, interest income today is negligible, unfortunately, but, okay, that, I thank you for the answer.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, but you can always transfer money into it, just like you did with the, the 1.5 million that was supposed to go back into the Conservation Futures Fund. It got transferred to the park improvement fund, so you can transfer other monies. I just think, for me, it's clearer, and no matter how, even if we were getting 5 million a year in the REIT fund, which we're nowhere near anything like, we don't have enough money in our whole budget to do all the stormwater facilities that we have to do. That's why I think it's, it should be such a high priority, that, kind of like what was spoken about in the flood fund, we really need to ensure a certain amount of money is in the, is in the stormwater facility fund, more than just what we're getting per year, that would make sure that we can fix all our stormwater facilities. We don't even know how many there are, I just know there are lots of them, but we don't know how many. And, you know, even when we spend money, it's not for everything in the stormwater facilities, it's just for phase one, phase two, you know, you finally get it done, but it's a lot of money.
All right, so we have the motion, no, Mr. Brown?
Ms. Brenner, you, this evening you proposed dismantling and destroying the Parks Department by breaking it up into different sections, and now you're proposing in multiple cases to defund it. Perhaps you could enlighten us as to what your overall plan is on this.
To defund what?
Defund the parks, I mean, to defund the park projects.
No, I'm saying take it from another, transfer it into the park improvement fund, and you didn't support me on my consolidation of the park.
No, no, I know, but, but your proposal was to dismantle the Parks Department.
Yeah, but it didn't.
And to take away the funding to do the projects.
I call it consolidate, you can call it dismantle, is it doesn't go anywhere else, it's just dismantled. This, I said consolidate, and I said exactly where they would go, so it wasn't dismantling as much as it was a consolidation, which didn't pass.
I believe you made a motion to
Yeah.
Switch the funding from REIT II to the Park Revenue Improvement Fund. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that fails six to one with council member Brenner in favor. Now we have the whole motion in front of us, any further discussion? Roll call.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes six to one with council member Brenner opposed.
Next item is an ordinance establishing the Academy Road Stormwater Improvements Fund and establishing a project-based budget for Academy Road Stormwater, Academy Road Stormwater Improvements. The committee recommended approval of this item three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, motion in front of us, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Next item is an ordinance establishing the Agate Heights Estate Bay Lane Stormwater Improvements Fund and establishing a project-based budget for Agate Heights Estate Bay Lane Stormwater Improvements. Committee recommended approval of this item three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, the motion's in front of us, any discussion? So we're ready for roll call.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Next ordinance establishes the Cedar Hills Euclid Stormwater Improvements Fund and establishes a project-based budget for Cedar Hills Euclid Stormwater Improvements. Committee recommended this three to zero for approval, and I would so move.
All right, motion in front of us, any discussion? Roll call.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Next ordinance is to establish the Criminal Justice Integrated Case Management Systems Fund and establishing a project-based budget for Criminal Justice Integrated Case Management System Projects. Committee recommended this item three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, the motion's in front of us, any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I'm going to support this because I like the idea of an integrated project fund that has several elected officials being part of it, rather than all, you know, all kind of decided by one elected official.
Okay, then, any other discussion?
And, and the executive's one of them, so he, I'm happy with, yeah, as long as there's more than just one person making the decisions.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Sorry. Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Yes. And that passes unanimously. And that does pass unanimously. Start to space out after 19 of them.
Well, we only have one more, and the final one is the ordinance establishing the Integrated Land Records and Permit Management System Fund and establishing a project-based budget for integrated land records and permit management system projects. Committee recommended this item three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, the motion's in front of us, any discussion? Ready for the roll call?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. We are on to our introduction items. Move approval. All right, Mr. Buchanan has moved acceptance of the introduction items.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. Committee reports, were there reports for any other committees? Planning, I know, Matt?
We did meet, we actually had a very productive conversation about long-range planning and land capacity analysis throughout the county and how we're going to work on our 2016 comp plan update. Good participation from the audience and the council, and I'm, I'm impressed with where we are in the process and, and looking forward to working on it in the future.
All right, I think that was the only other committee that met this morning, and I guess there was some other stuff in finance, was there anything to report?
Would we end up talking, there was something at the end, I can't remember. Sorry, I don't have it at the top of mind right now. It wasn't on the agenda, so.
All right.
Just our, just our business report, I think that was the only one.
Other items, anybody have any other items?
You mean?
How about council member updates?
I'd just like to take a moment before we get too far off a topic to thank the council, the community, and the great staff that we have throughout the organization, and a special shout-out to Dewey Desler, Brad, Tyler, and Mary Ann, and of course, all of the department heads and elected officials that have worked diligently over the last few months on this budget. It's been a rewarding experience, it's challenging along with that, there's a tremendous amount of decisions to make on behalf of our citizens, but I just want to thank, thank each of you for your involvement and your participation and your leadership provided in that, and if I've missed any staff members that I, that I should have called out, I do apologize for that, but I think that it's been a good process. Looking forward to engaging the council after the first of the year on the purchasing policies, I've committed to that, and I'm seriously committed to that, we will, we'll engage you with on that, and we're going to work hard on all of these projects and initiatives that we've laid out as our work plan for the next couple of years, so thank you so much.
Thank you, you're here. Council member updates, start at that end?
Well, both myself, Mr. Cremmon, and Mr. Lous all attended WASAC, and it was quite an interesting process, particularly the second day, which, which talked about council process, and there was a resource there that was absolutely excellent, one of the best resources I've ever seen on, on pretty much any topic, it was very engaging, very educational.
Great. Buchanan?
Nothing to report?
Well, before I report anything, I want to say a special thank you to Mary Ann because she got, she got stuck with me, nobody else wanted me, and she, she's been so responsive when I need things, and I really, don't ever retire, I really appreciate you, so. Anyway, I attended the Watkins Food Network, it's, I think it's quarterly, it seems like I go there three or four times a year. If anybody gets a chance to go, it's a wonderful way to see the interaction of how we get better foods into Watkins County and all the organizations who work with us on that, and I think it's wonderful. The other thing was, oh yeah, I went to the Birch Bay Chamber Annual General Meeting, and our illustrious executive, Mr. Lous, was the guest speaker, and I'll be the first one to say, I already told him, but I'll be the first one to say, it was a really fun speech he gave, I really enjoyed it, and I, the place was packed, so it's a good, it was at the Ferndale Events Center, and man, there were no empty tables at all, so that thing's kind of big inside.
The Birch Bay Chamber, met in Ferndale?
Yeah, I know, I go, are you really meeting, and I called them to make sure I had it right, because I was thinking, are you really, and, but yeah, it's a great, it's a very central location for a lot of things. I've been to other things there that are not Ferndale things too, so, yeah, it's, yeah, and I'm sure there's other things I could say, but they're good things to attend, and there was, there was another one, can't remember.
Mr. Cremmon?
Thank you, and I know we've had a long day, but there's something that I do have to report on, I feel compelled to report on, that's significant, and that is, while you guys were on your lunch break today, the Legislative Steering Committee of the Washington Association of Counties held a meeting, and I was able to participate via telephone, and we took a significant step, we, we took an action, I in fact made the motion, it was seconded by Stephanie Wright, my counterpart from Snohomish County, and that is a, a proposal that the Association of Counties is partnering with the Association of Cities, and it's dealing with shared revenue for recreational marijuana. It's a big, it's a big issue for us, and the proposal that we agreed on, both the cities and the counties, very unusual, it is a departure from the traditional split of 80/20 with 80 percent going to cities. The cities actually have agreed to have a, a total expected share of anywhere between 50 and 60 percent, and the counties will get between 50 and 40 percent, and I know this is a little complicated, but there are going to be two, I won't use the word pots, there are two
Toys.
There's going to be two pies or barrels of money, of, of revenue that will be shared and distributed based where the tax is collected is one of them, and 50 percent of that revenue, it goes into that, and then the other barrel, it will be distribution for criminal justice purposes. And the breakdown that the cities and the counties agreed on was that the counties would get approximately anywhere from 10 to 30 percent, and that's where the tax is collected, but it's not just at the retail level, it's at the, the production and the processing level as well, so the county does stand to get some revenue. Now, this is all contingent upon legislative approval.
Yeah.
But, and it's a tough road to hold, but the fact that the counties and the cities are, are arm-in-arm in this effort is a huge and rare occasion, and so, yeah, I think that the legislature will think a lot more seriously about this with, when the counties and the cities are, are in lockstep with this. Now, and for the distribution for criminal justice purposes, which we, was a big issue that we heard tonight, the counties will get a fixed amount of 70 percent of the take, and, and the cities will get 30 percent. So, of course, the cities that outright ban, you know, will not get any revenue because they won't be generating any, but, but this is a very significant move that the, the association has, has taken to, you know, to line up with the cities, and hopefully, we'll get a legislature that will be receptive to the joint proposal, and we'll just see what the legislative session bears, and I, I will do everything I can during the upcoming, bears, and I will do everything I can during the upcoming, should the council assign me to Legislative Steering Committee in the reorganization coming up in January, but I will do everything I can to help promote and, and foster a positive culmination of this effort.
That's an exciting proposal, and I hope it doesn't all go up in smoke.
Oh, jeez.
I was waiting for him to tell us it was a high priority.
Oh, God.
Okay, now that we're done with the puns, or you've got a pun you want to throw in?
No, no pun. Councilmember Cremon, I think it would be appropriate, and, and I think it's really neat what you did on the amicus brief. I think that would be nice to let people know about that, too.
Well, I didn't, I didn't bring that up because it, it deals with some litigation, yeah, so.
Yeah, but it's legal to say that somebody's going to do it.
Yeah, I have been working along with the executive in getting someone to do the legal work on behalf of WASAC so that, so that they can submit an amicus brief in support of Waukun County, and Snohomish County was good enough, I talked to both the Chair of the Snohomish County Council, Councilmember Summers, as well as the LSC representative from Snohomish County, Stephanie Wright, and they were, they were very, very accommodating and willing to assist in putting together that amicus brief, and I'm very pleased that we were able to move forward, and I, I was led to believe, in fact, promised that they would do this at breakneck speed so that they would be able to, so that WASAC will be able to submit the brief in a timely manner.
Great, great. Ms. Brenner?
And the reason I ask, you know, it's not about any private conversations, it's about the fact that thanks to his efforts, it's going to save the taxpayers money, and that's always a good thing.
Mr. Crawford? All right, any other business for the good of the order? Seen none, we're adjourned.